These high school boys and girls are having a hop at the local soda fountain. Innocently, they dance. Innocent of a new and deadly menace lurking behind closed doors. Marijuana, the burning weed with its roots in hell.
Marijuana reform, a relevant topic in every state capital, for good reasons. Yearly, in the US, over 750,000 people are incarcerated and over $7.7 billion is spent to enforce marijuana laws. Recent polls have shown a clear majority of American adults now support marijuana legalization and feel the enormous cost of marijuana prohibition far outweigh the benefits, if any. States like Colorado and Washington have already made the move to legalize it statewide, while Michigan continues to spend an estimated $326 million a year arresting, trying, and imprisoning people for marijuana offenses. There is progress, however, as multiple cities have decriminalized the drug and others are attempting to follow suit in 2013. Also being voted on in 2013 is House Bill 4623, which aims to decriminalize marijuana statewide. On August 14th, I attended a town hall meeting in Grasslake to learn more about this bill and the importance of marijuana reform in Michigan.
Hi, Mike. My name is Mike Shirkey. I'm a state representative for the 65th district, which covers two-thirds of Jackson County and a little bit of Lenawee and Eaton Counties. We're here tonight to discuss kind of an open forum on House Bill 4623, which is sponsored by Representative Jeff Irwin, and I co-sponsored it. It is a bill that would lead us in a direction of decriminalizing the recreational use of marijuana. Now, I frankly not, don't have a solid position on this, but I do have a solid position on the fact that we need a robust debate on it, because I do think the probability is high that we're spending resources and spending money for things that we probably shouldn't be. And so, I'm glad, it looks like we're gonna have a great turnout. We got an expert here from LEAP, and he's a former prosecutor in the Cook County area in Chicago, and he's gonna speak about his experience nationwide on areas that have gone down this road and what they've experienced. So I'm looking forward to a good-hearted discussion, and we're gonna get started here real quick.
Hey, young America, we need to talk. You may think this is uncool, you may even think it is bogus, but I want to tell you about something that has everyone buzzing. Something that concerns mature boys and girls just like you. Something called grass. Not that grass, I'm talking about marijuana.
I actually wanna talk about where we are now and the small step that we can take here in Michigan to make our state a better place. And that is decriminalization, House Bill 4623. Now, before I get into it, I wanna say that I think marijuana should be legal and regulated very much similarly to alcohol. I'd like us to take all of the drugs that the people might use or abuse and put them on a continuum of their level of harm, their level of ability to do damage to the human body, how addictive are they, how potent are they, what kind of intoxication do they cause? And one of those actual properties likely to manifest, how are they likely to manifest in society? So that's where I'd like to go in the long term. But in the short term, there are smaller steps that we can take. And always in the political world, I really believe in it from now on, right? Every little step is an important step towards our goal. And the step that we can take right now is to take the step that so many of our communities around Michigan have taken, which is to decriminalize marijuana. To take small-time possession, small-time users out of the criminal justice system and stop spending money on arresting, trying, and incarcerating these individuals. And why would we do that? Well, we do it, I think, really for both pragmatic reasons and philosophical reasons. So I'm gonna start with the philosophical reasons, because this is the territory, I think, upon Representative Shirkey and I really have a lot of agree. Which is that this is America, right? This is a free country. This country was built on the idea that people should be able to do what they want as long as they're not negatively impacting their neighbors, right? So based on that core philosophy that is so central to who we are as Americans and why our country's been so successful, prohibition is a violation of that concept. And we learned it back in the 30s, and we're learning it again now. I hope we can learn the lesson before it does too much damage. Here in Michigan, based on a study from MSU that's actually about four years old now, we spend about $325 million every year in this state arresting, trying, and incarcerating marijuana users. There's also the opportunity cost that we have with drug prohibition, including with marijuana. We have a lot of people in this state, many of them young people, who experiment with marijuana in their youth and, you know, they maybe get caught, right? And those people end up with a record, often, for the rest of their lives. That record makes it harder for them to get jobs, it makes them harder to, you know, be successful in their community, to be productive citizens. So there's an opportunity cost there for us in the state. There's also the opportunity cost with our local law enforcement. We spend a tremendous amount of money at the local level on public safety and justice. I was a county commissioner for 11 years before I came to the State House. I can tell you that Washington County's budget, we spend $200 million a year, about half of that is on police enforcement. And it's probably very similar here in Jackson, it's probably very similar in your local community as well. We put a tremendous amount of effort financially into public safety. Marijuana prohibition drives the success of criminal gangs. It drives the success of violent criminals. And it enriches them, right? So much of the crime we see in our big cities and our small towns and our rural areas is generated by fights and disputes over drugs. And marijuana is a big piece of it. So we can have a public safety gain by decriminalizing marijuana, not just by focusing our law enforcement resources, but we could also, we could also really cut the legs out from a number of criminal enterprises in the state by taking away what is their lifeline, their financial whereabouts. These violent criminal gangs thrive on this drug network. Driving this business more and more into the light, more and more into a legal and regulated environment, we have a better and better chance of actually cutting the legs off of those organizations, improving public safety, and resulting in a safer community for all of us. So we need to try something different. We need to try something that might have a chance of working. And we need to learn the lessons of history, right? Al Capone was already brought up. We know that when you prohibit substances, the government simply doesn't have the power to dominate everyone's behavior in their own homes, and it shouldn't have that kind of power. It doesn't, and it shouldn't, right? And we learned this in the 30s. When the government tries to tell people, "You can't drink alcohol," it doesn't work. It empowers criminal gangs, and it's a huge failure. And it's taken us a little bit longer to get there with marijuana. But I think the public's there now. They understand what the real risks and harms of marijuana are, and they want the government to be honest and to be real and to adopt a policy that might have a better chance of serving our citizens here in Michigan.
The plain fact is that none of us know very much about this drug in any verifiable way.
Well, Bill, it's been about two hours since you got the drug. How do you feel?
Fantastic. Defiant? Not at all. Businesslike? Not at all. Sheesh. Friendly? Uh... Extreme? I saw ridiculous.
Would you be interested in taking part in a study like this again and having the same type of drug?
Sure.
You would. It's been a very pleasant experience for you.
I'll do it anytime you want.
Do you think it would be...
Anytime at all.
Do you think it would be...
Just call me anytime of the day or...
And we found out that the drug makes people happy, it makes them intoxicated, and finally, makes them sleepy, which is about what marijuana users were telling us happened all the time.
I'm with an organization called LEAP, Law Enforcement Against Prohibition. I'm a former drug prosecutor in Chicago. I'm opposed generally to using drugs unless someone's sick and can benefit from medical marijuana. I'm more opposed to the war on drugs. Richard Nixon was mistaken when he said that drug use is public enemy number one in 1971. The war on drugs is public enemy number one. LEAP is in support of this bill, which has been introduced, which is trying to minimize some of the harm on the most benign of the substances which we outlaw. And that, of course, is marijuana. The war on drugs has three fundamental defects. Number one, it causes what it was designed to present, prevent. We put it in place because we wanted to save the kids from drugs. We wanted them to be drug-free. And so, we thought, "Well, drugs are bad, and we wanted to discourage it, so let's outlaw it." Well, the irony is, when you outlaw something, you give up the right to control and regulate it. So, and secondly, you engage the black market forces. So now, something that grows on a plant ends up becoming the most valuable commodity on the face of the earth. So kids are quitting school, joining gangs, getting guns, shooting at each other, fighting over who is going to control the marijuana and other drug sales. As a result of the war on drugs, instead of less drugs, we have more drugs. And the irony again of prohibition is, when you prohibit something, you give up the right to regulate and control it. And drugs are too dangerous not to control and regulate. So we, in this country and the world now, seize drugs by the ton, and we prosecute them by the gram. How much calculation do you have to do to realize that that doesn't add up? Two, not only does it not work for its intended purpose, but it's the heart of nearly any crisis you can name in America. You name a crisis that you're concerned about here in the state of Michigan, and the war on drugs makes it worse. The kids are tempted to do the wrong thing because we slide a pot of gold next to the choice we tell them not to take. Then they're fighting with each other over who's gonna control the sales. They're shooting each other because one corner can be worth $60,000 in drug sales a day. And then, because they shoot each other, we gotta put them in jail, convict them, then we gotta build prisons to the point where we can't pay for schools. In the state of Michigan, the support of higher education, I understand, has dropped some 15%. There are some 55 school districts on the deficit list where it's anticipated, according to the state superintendent, that they're not going to be able to pay the bills. During the 1990s, the fastest-growing housing in the United States was prisons because of the war on drugs. The fastest-growing housing. If you're a prison contractor, are you in favor of the war on drugs? Well, absolutely. If you have the drug testing concession for the courthouse in Chicago, it's worth $21 million a year, are you in favor of the war on drugs? Well, sure. So, anyway, in Michigan, you got a $2 billion prison bill, a prison population of some 43,000, and you can't pay the bills. The reason that the pendulum is swinging and you're starting to see people talk about drug policy reform is not because their attitudes have changed about drug use, not because the majority of people don't prefer sobriety, but because government cannot pay the bills for all of these crises that come spewing out of the faucet when you turn the prohibition knobs on. You name the crisis: guns, gangs, crime, prisons, taxes, deficits, AIDS, inability to pay for healthcare, kids overdosing. All of these things are made worse instead of better. Number three, the Y is something that failed so mightily, still in place after 40-plus years. The drug cartels today are in favor of the prohibition of substances. The street gangs in Chicago, which there are 100,000, are in favor of the war on drugs. Why should the good guys be on the same side? Why should the parents, who care about their kids, be on the same side with the bad guys? Makes no sense, right? If the bad guy's for it, I should be against it, but instead, we line up with them. If you're one of the 100,000 policemen that got hired because Clinton says we have so much crime, prohibition crime, that we've gotta hire 100,000 police, and you got the job, are you in favor of the war on drugs? Well, sure. If you're the peasant-prison contractor with the fastest-growing housing in the United States prisons, are you in favor of the war on drugs? If you have that drug testing contractor, are you in favor of it? If you manufacture in Connecticut the helicopters that they're using to spray the foliage and the marijuana and cocaine in Colombia, are you in favor of the war on drugs? Well, of course. If in the town that I come from, they put up a new $4 million police station, and it doesn't cost the taxpayers a red cent, and there's no bonded indebtedness, if you're the mayor and the alderman and the trustee, are you in favor of the war on drugs? When drugs are seized and forfeited, half the money goes to the local police authority and half goes to the federal government. The money that comes in can be used for unbudgeted items like buying more squad cars, like battering rams, more weaponry. The plane that used to be the drug dealers is now ours. The boat, the jewelry, the cash is now ours. So law enforcement ends up, oftentimes, on the side of the bad guys supporting the war on drugs because it's feeding them. Well, I have an idea. Drugs are bad, so let's put anti-drug advertising on TV. The radio will reach every kid over the age of 12 five times a week with these ads. When you put an ad on to say, "Don't use drugs," whether you say, "Don't use drugs" or you say, "Do use drugs," it's a drug ad. We spend $400 billion a year in anti-drug advertising, which is a boon to the drug business. We send the kids through their program, and the kids who go through their program to learn prevention end up with a higher rate of drug use than the kids who don't go through the program. In drug policy reform, everything works in reverse. You think of something you think would be good to stop drug use, it'll be drugogenic. If something sounds like that's ludicrous, it might work. Everything is counterintuitive in this field of drug policy. So the long and the short of the three things I'm trying to get you to look at in the perspective of this marijuana thing. Marijuana is relatively benign. Upteen doctors have said that it should be used. The former head of the DEA says, "Oh, we can't legalize marijuana" because he runs a business that now sells drug-free workplaces to Fortune 500 companies. Meth, cocaine, and heroin go through the system in some 12 or 24 hours. So if you're in the drug testing business, you're gonna get a lot of negatives, even though the guy had the party over the weekend. But if we can keep marijuana outlawed, it stays in the system in the fat molecules of the body for at least a couple of weeks, and we'll be able to get more positives. Now, we have more people we have to put into drug treatment. Our drug treaters in favor of the war on drugs. Yes, one of the most difficult audiences to talk to are law enforcement and the drug treaters, the people who are riding the drug war gravy train. I'm telling you, the war on drugs is public enemy number one. Drugs are dangerous, but uncontrolled and unregulated drugs are more dangerous.
While Representative Jeff Irwin and LEAP Speaker Jim Gurek both made valet points for marijuana reform, I found the passionate crowd of marijuana advocates to be most moving.
My name's Thomas Reed, and I'm here here for Michigan, here here for patients. I was listening to everything that everybody was saying. I have a real hang-up about dealing with medical marijuana in the way that we are right now. And that's that none of us know anything about. Especially the lawmakers, and they've tried. I sat in on many discussions, the random ideas you have, with the lawmakers. They researched for years, and yet, at the end of their research, they came in and put more restrictions on medical marijuana patients. It was beyond me. Then, when you have your own government that you pay to be in a program where you are, they search through your entire record, make sure that you're a good citizen, to be able to handle this very dangerous drug marijuana, because it might help you. Well, I think personally that where we have to start our change is in each and every one of us and realize that this country made a mistake. We made a mistake in 1930 when Ann Slenger started getting into this prohibition. It was a trick. They took cannabis, which was into medicine, and they outlawed it as marijuana. Nobody even knew it. All of a sudden, boom, it's pulled out of medicine and it's put back into this illegal drug category. Well, I wanna say that if the only way we're gonna get to those laws is by this shuffling, slowly shuffling, slowly giving us an ounce. I wanna tell you, as a caregiver, people die if they only have an ounce, okay? That doesn't work. In fact, under the Michigan laws, with only 12 plants per patient, I have a patient that needs a lot of plants because he juices. And this has only been found in recent times, that in juicing, using the THC A levels, the acid levels, and using the CBD A levels, we're finding what they call miracles on the West Coast, okay? And in Michigan, there's things happening here too. But if we can have the plant and we can draw out the THC, I mean, just juice it and take it. No psychoactivity, no nothing, just an herb, and it really helps you. We found out in 2007 in California, Sean Callister and Pierre Prey in a West Coast medical center found that the IV1 gene was shut down by CBD. CBD, a component of the plant that's non-toxic, non-psychoactive, no problem with it. We have to look at the reality. We have to start with one simple thing. I heard somebody say, "Tell the doctors." To me, that's like this drug cartel stuff. I mean, tell them, tell them that they're going to, what? Lose their professions and lose their monies? We have to go somewhere else. And the way we get there is by facing a truth in ourselves. If we look in ourselves and we let ourselves be educated to the medical benefits of cannabis, and we look into the science of it, the real science, I mean, if I can shut down IV1 gene with CBD, they found, since 2007, it was reported in Huffington Post in September 2012, that they've been studying it for five years. They found out that the IV1 gene is real present inside all of the aggressive cancers that we have. So why aren't we using this? Why are we limited in the plant count? That won't happen if all of our hearts and all of our compassion and all of our love for all of the people come together and realize we're not hurting anybody. The thing that I really wanna ask you people is that if we could change the law, we could do it very simply and admit our mistake. Just admit it. Study, get the education. If we find out that the endocannabinoid system can control all of our energy intake, our energy, the storage of nutrients, and the metabolism, we can find out all of that. We can find out the receptors in our brain, in our bones, in our lungs, and in all of the vital organs. I shut down nerve pain, I shut down bone pain, I shut down epileptic seizures. I shut down my mother's varicose veins for having trouble with them with CBD. So there's a lot there. And the only way we're gonna get there is to say, "No, this isn't a drug. This doesn't need to be removed from anything. It shouldn't have been there in the first place, so let's join the science and bring in a new healthcare ability in the United States."
Man, everybody blows a pot.
Uh-uh. I know this one guy that doesn't. Wait, not that guy, this guy.
Oh, no, thank you. Not for me.
Fly high, it enhances my creativity.
No, it doesn't. Look at these paintings. The artist was stoned when he painted these. Those don't look like real flowers.
Where I see the problem is, all these people making money off of it, even our lawmakers. See, the problem is, we've got a 10th amendment where states have rights. The federal government was born of the states. And just like she said, Arizona, they can overwrite certain things the federal government wants. The federal government doesn't control us. We are sovereign, we control ourselves. It's like having your kids be able to make the rules in your house. They're born of you, they are valued by your rules. Federal government needs to do the same. Number two, we've got law enforcement says, "What can I do? I gotta follow the law." Unless it doesn't really benefit me, such as State Attorney General shooting, in which he goes, "Well, yeah, I know they voted on that, and that's a law, but I'm not gonna follow it." Okay, so I find the problem, laws. Instead of creating more laws, what are you two gonna do to start cutting some of the laws out that we have that are just ridiculous? Let's get back to the 10th amendment. Let's get back to the people that stopped letting this money go. You know, we talked about some of the doctors. Some of the doctors, if it's medical, why aren't the doctors writing prescriptions for them? Well, because when doctors go to medical school, they don't learn chemistry and learn how to do medicine. Pharmacology companies come in, drug companies come in and teach them their drugs. And because they're not growing marijuana, it's not being prescribed by doctors, and I can't go to my Walmart pharmacy and get it. So if you wanna talk about it, let's put it into its medical place, right there. The other thing is, your county sheriff is the most powerful person in the United States. Know who your county sheriff is. Find out what they believe in. Don't look at what their party affiliation is. I ran as Republican, the county sheriff in Hillsdale in 2012. Find out what your sheriff believes. Because the sheriff can throw the federal government out of his county, the FBI. The FBI doesn't get to come in and take one of my cases. They only get to come into my county if I instruct them.
The county sheriff is the only elected law enforcement officer in the United States, and certainly in his county. So he's the only official that reports directly to the power source. In other words, he's not a bureaucrat. He wasn't appointed by some other body. He reports directly to we, the people. And so, he is sovereign in that regard because he reports directly to the other sovereigns. The President of the United States cannot tell your sheriff what to do. And so, certainly, none of the other auxiliary departments underneath the President can tell the sheriff what to do, and that includes the IRS, the EPA, OSHA, FBI, DEA. Any of those agencies cannot tell the sheriff what to do. But when they're in his sovereign jurisdiction, he can tell them what to do. The question is, will he?
And I'm a big believer in where if somebody said Congress a little bit ago, you'd realize we call a big bunch of baboons a Congress?
Yeah.
Politics, poly is many blood-sucking leeches, and that's the problem. We need to understand what John Locke said. We need to get back to what the Constitution really means instead of...
So you're saying the feds just can't come in and take over a county's case? No, well, he just said they took over his case, but the sheriff... Did you invite him in?
I've practiced this law for 33 years, he doesn't know what he's talking about.
Oh, yeah, Officer Brian. He does not support marijuana reform. Let's head back and find out why.
The problem that I have tonight is, like you also said, I think you're counterintuitive, so I'm against your legislation, sorry. Here's why. You would think that, you know, it would be a good thing to incrementally go in that direction. But as I told Mike beforehand, first of all, as a general rule, we do not go looking for people who are smoking marijuana. If we find people who are smoking marijuana, then they get arrested, things like that. And so, generally, what we're doing is, there's a stop of an automobile because a guy's leaving down the street or for whatever other reason, and they got marijuana. So we're not spending resources just to go get them. From a law enforcement viewpoint, the concern that I have with this legislation is that right now, if, you know, the structure has created to some extent, not as bad here in Michigan, and I'll get on that in a second, but it has created the structure where the bad, bad guys are the ones who are behind the big drug activities, okay? And if what we do, as I told Mike, I said, "We're kinda going at this on the long end." Because if our warrant, our philosophical basis for saying, "Don't use marijuana" because marijuana's bad for you, then how is the production of marijuana hurting anybody? Does the sale of marijuana hurting anybody? It doesn't. Where is somebody hurt? If somebody misuses marijuana, it was on the back, crashes their car, whatever it may be. Same with alcohol. In production, alcohol doesn't do anything. Sale of alcohol doesn't do anything. You're gonna drive and kill people, okay? So what this legislation is doing is, it's lighting up on the only people who might be with justification throughout marijuana at all. If determined effect truly does happen, you're gonna increase the demand for marijuana, which is gonna put the profits in the hands of the real vegans that we don't wanna have run. So if we were looking at, can we change the world, which everybody's talked about here tonight? If we can change the world, whole different subject. But just taking this slice and saying, "We'll make it easier at the user." Well, you can't have a user without a supplier. You can't have, you know, the whole thing has a system to it. So we can't just take this little snatchout and say, "This is gonna cure the problem." And more than that, you take away my best end to those bad guys. Because my end to those bad guys, as Jim talked about, was, we get the guy, we get him shaking in his boots, and we say, "You tell us where you got the marijuana from." And now, if it's, "We're gonna give you a civil infraction citation," you know, it's like, they go, "Of yours." You know, I'm not gonna go mess with that guy for the sake of that. You know, I'm not going to go mess with that guy for the sake of that. So our ability to enforce the law becomes exacerbated by that. So in the world we really live in today, having this one change, I think, is negative. If we had this different world, it'd be a whole different discussion, a whole different story. But that's what I see as a probability in the reality I live in, when, like last week, I was going visiting people, we were making home calls because we had state police helicopters flying over places where they had marijuana plants growing, and we were, you know, we were seeing people. And some people were actually doing it right, but not very many.
What happened, you weren't doing it right? Pardon? What's that? Take where one doing it right, you were hovering over?
There were some that we saw that were all right, but we couldn't see... The problem is, and this is a problem for people who have, especially if you use the real white fencing on the top of something, like your smartphone, you can't really see from the air. And so we would go knock on the door, we'd ask, "Can we take a peek, say thanks, bye?" And we'd be out there.
But, yeah, we also...
You know, we're...
Do you hear traffic stop?
Yeah.
Do you hear traffic stop?
I love to enforce the law. I swear on all of you, I have to swear the old and past weeks for the United States and the law of the United States.
It's really alarming how many peace officers, policemen, law enforcement officers, sheriffs, chiefs of police, who have actually taken an oath of office to uphold and defend, protect and reserve the United States Constitution, and then when you present them with that thought or idea that that's exactly what they should be doing, they claim that it isn't their job to uphold and defend the Constitution, that which they've already sworn an oath to do. We have replaced our Constitution, which was the bulwark of our freedom in this country, with political agendas, political selfishness, and ultimately, political correctness has replaced our Constitution. And so it is at any wonder that we're so far off track. And my message is, law enforcement owns part of that problem, and we need to correct it.
In the day-to-day conduct of your police duties, no matter how or for what reason you're called to investigate a situation in a residence, use your eyes to detect evidence of marijuana, hashish, or narcotic violations. The evidence you're looking for is here, all right, but it has to be located before you can read it. Use your eyes.
I'm 19 years old. Am I really causing any harm? I take a topical treatment three times a day. I don't get high off of it. I've never gotten high off of it. But now I am no longer allowed to use it because the court system decided that oils or topicals are no longer covered under usable marijuana. I want to know, what is the marijuana mixture? If oil's not a marijuana mixture, if edible's not a marijuana, how am I supposed to cure my cancer, my hepatitis, my chronic illness, if I cannot take concentrated, the actual medication that I need? They're going to put me back on oxycontin. There's 42,000 people that died in Michigan alone from oxycontin. You're not blaming me for not taking the things that will kill other people. There's no way. So we can fight about, should it be legal, what isn't, but what I want to fight about is, why are the people who are legally doing it right still affected and decriminalizing it? Like, there's no reason. I can be evicted for any point in time for using medical marijuana. I can't find a job that pays over $7.40 an hour because I can't pass a drug test. And it's not, I'm like, I'm a medical marijuana patient here. I've been a medical marijuana patient. I've never used marijuana in a pod. I'm never getting out of poverty. I'm going to school right now for a job I'm never going to get because I'm not passing drug tests. So that's what we need to talk about. We need to talk about what happens when people cannot advance further than $7.40 an hour. We need to talk about what happens now.
It starts somewhere, and it starts right there with you guys. You know what? In many ways, I think, we're outcasts in the GOP, but you know what? That's too bad. But it starts somewhere. And you know what? Honestly, everyone, it starts with you and I. My friend who spoke on the Constitution is on it, and ma'am, I'm sorry for your pain. A lot of that is caused by politics, but we control it. And the best thing to do from here is follow these guys. We're headed in the right direction. This may be a stupid analogy, everyone, and I'm not going to go on a speech, but when you have a curfew at 9 o'clock, all of a sudden, your mom doesn't say, "Okay, it's now midnight." And we are not, we can just not, after years of where we're at, just not jump off the cliff, slowly but surely. This is the step to the next step. And I mean, these guys are going on a limb for us. We need to back these guys. I've been doing this a long time, involved in politics, and we're talking about true representatives of the people. They're not looking at any party, they're not looking at anything but what is right. And I applaud Mike, who brought in someone with a different opinion. Do we all want to just sit around and agree?
Is marijuana really where it's at? Is it really as righteous as you think? There is more to life than grass. There are fulfilling careers and groovy beach parties. The closer you look, the more seeds you find in your stash. Follow your hopes and dreams. Be someone. Do yourself and your country a favor. Don't let this happen to you.